That's.
Councilmember Lucas.
Present.
Mayor from town Brown.
President.
Councilmember Somerville.
President.
Mayor Richardson.
President.
Councilmember Sweet. Councilmember Simmons. St. John's James.
Present.
By present, by support.
I move to excuse Councilmembers Sweet and Simmons.
Support. It's the move to support it to excuse Councilmembers Sweet and Simmons of pavement. They are.
Hi.
The I have it. They will be excused. Okay. Without, we all stand, please. Pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We open now the agenda approval.
Who can approve the agenda? Support.
The move to support it to approve the agenda. Are there any movements on the agenda? Or we go? If they say, okay, all in favor of the agenda approval, if please. You say, ah.
Hi. Hi.
Chance you could hold it up a little bit. Name this area now. Okay. We will now open up public hearing. Thank you.
Council, please speak into the microphone.
Uh, Tom Harris. Please. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good to see you.
Good to see you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
My name is Tom Harrison. I'm the owner of the Michigan Ladder Building here in Exalani. I'm only here tonight to, while I don't understand all of the ordinances and the changes of the ordinances, I'm just here to hopefully encourage the city to allow the process to continue with our building. It's been vacant for about a year and a half, and we've had a deal on the building for about a year. And the buyer has worked hard and spent a lot of time and money acting in good faith to get the building ready so that they could purchase it. And I I know the building has also been broken into probably six or eight times or requiring police response. So I'm just hoping that the city, whatever happens, does not impede that process so that it can continue and the new buyers can get in and fix the building up. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um. Yeah, Mr. Nicholas Taylor.
Hello. My name is Nicholas Taylor. I'm just here in regards to all the talk lately of like electronic license plate readers and stuff like that. I think it's a terrible idea for our community. I think it's more oversight than we need. We trust our citizens or I trust my neighbors. I think that something like this just allows another entity to collect more data and spy on us unnecessarily. Thank you.
Thank you. Grace Taylor.
Hey there. My name is Grace Taylor. I also am opposed to license plate readers in the city. I also don't think that upgrading the police car is the very good idea, and that's all I would say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right. Thank you. Um. Suja. That's me. I hope I didn't.
You did a great job. Hello, everyone. My name is Judith Matty, and I'm one of the founding attorneys of the H and H Law Group. And we're a law firm based out of Dearborn, Michigan. I want to begin by thanking the city council for providing us with the opportunity to speak today and thanking the community for coming out to voice their opinion. I'm here on behalf of my clients and others to express gratitude to the city for limiting the scope of the current proposed moratorium to only encompass the sale and dispensing of marijuana. So that's their only covering the retailers, the micro businesses, and the provisioning centers, which are just medical retailers, for those of you who are unfamiliar with the terms provisioning center. We ask that the language not be expanded to encompass all marijuana businesses for the following few reasons. One, businesses that sell and dispense marijuana are completely different in nature than the others. Retailers, provisioning centers, micro businesses, they all have a storefront, whereas grows, processors, safety compliance labs, and secure transporters do not. And then also businesses that sell and dispense marijuana are generally allowed in different locations entirely. Retailers, provisioning centers, and micro businesses are generally only allowed in commercial districts, whereas grows, processors, safety compliance lab, and secure transporters, they're restricted to industrial parks where they're tucked away completely out of sight by the public. And then, also, the way that retailers, provisioning centers, and micro businesses present themselves to the public is very different. The public knows right away what kind of business is located within a retailer or provisioning center or a micro business. Whereas with the others, the public would have no idea because grows and processors and safety compliance labs and so on, they're housed in warehouses in the industrial district, and they don't advertise what they are on the exterior. So it's not like they're, it's not like people would know that that's what they are if they were to drive by. So there's, you know, there's no signage of any sort that identifies that they're in the marijuana industry generally. And last but not least, there are applicants in the city, like my client, for example, who with these investments worth over 100,000 plus, if they, if the city were to restrict all the licenses or to expand the scope of the current, the currently proposed moratorium to encompass all of them. So there are other property developers, to my understanding, that have spent money, at least with my client, I can speak to them. They spent a lot of money to get the special use permits and site plans approved and are currently undergoing engineering review, hopefully. But they have not yet submitted their marijuana facility permit, and the reason being is that there's a timeframe where you're supposed to be ready to obtain this specific occupancy after submitting the marijuana facility permit. And given the time it's going to take to get the building where it needs to be, that's really the reason why we held off. So it's just the way that the ordinance is written, but we're definitely, we've been working on it for over a year now, and we've gone through the Historic District Commission, the CPA, the Planning Commission twice in city council. We finally got our approvals. That's my time. So yes, thank you. For those reasons, I hope that we continue to limit the scope to just the sound, I think. All right. Thank you very much.
So, hi.
All right. I'm here with them as well. I just agree with everything she has to say. On top of that, Paul, I'm one of the people that have been working on this for over two years, trying to get somewhere. See, and eventually we did sign the ladder company, which we've spent a lot of time, work, effort, and money trying to bring up to certain areas that don't look good. Somebody that went to school here, lives around here. I don't only want to help myself grow, I want to help the city grow.
Thank you. Ramsey, Ramsey. You have to help me if you have to.
It's all right. Oh, Shaka. Ramsey, oh, Shaka, thank you for having me. I'm also with the group currently living at the 12 East Forest property. I have businesses in Farmington Hills and Troy and Redford, and one of the things we'd like to bring to Exalani is we'll bring to those other cities and encouraging and donating to the schools, police department, and hopefully setting up public drives. So we would love to be part of the community to guys to help us with that. Limit the scope to just the sale of the amount of marijuana and not the cultivation of it. So, thank you.
Thank you. So, okay.
Hi. I'm Catholic, honey. And I'm also with the group that's looking at 12 East Forest. We, as Renji had mentioned, we own multiple businesses that would bring our a special sign of professionalism to the city and to our businesses. Um, if given the chance, we will definitely have it. The city just laid it up. As eastern graduates and supporters of the school business, we are very big, give back to the community. That's what we plan to do.
All right.
Thank you.
We would mail them.
Secret Melvin, at 41 West Michigan Avenue, with 170 seniors. We received from Washington County Alert from the Sheriff's Department. It's a former resident, it's a cell phone carrier of the Gandhi Commission 3G's network. This means your owner, 3G, my track phone, flip phones, et cetera, will no longer have the ability to make calls, including 911. We need a technician in our building to come and teach seniors how to adjust the phones or do their phones. Because I myself, I had to go out by another phone because this one phone wouldn't work. Plus, I have, my track phone has paid out to 2023 March, but it's been crazy. And the safe effect is on the internet, on the computer. One minute it works and I have to go into task and reprogram the whole thing. So it's been horrible. And as you can see, I'm wearing a banana. That's because since April, my landlords have tried to evict me under the most craziest things, like I put dry powdered milk on the roaders, which are my roaders for my house that I brought there 15 years ago. Some of the neighbors complained to the management that they ate the dirt if they got sick. So I got a letter from the attorney, blah, blah, blah. Then I got a letter from the attorney that I called somebody, something else. But in the meantime, she fired the two maintenance guys that have been there for eight years and promoted the housekeeper. Well, the housekeeper, we have air conditioning units that have been leaky for, I don't know as long as I've been there. My neighbor has one that leaked. After four weeks, the housekeeper that got promoted came, made a hole in the ceiling, made sure more water comes into the apartment. Her apartment, the carpet is all warped. This is eight weeks later. Mold and mildew is growing there. And since we really don't socialize with each other, because the community won't get close at five o'clock, so we really don't get to talk to each other at all. And somehow, as citizens, they don't even come out of that apartment. That's how scared they are because of COVID. So we need a team that comes and well, I don't think one used to like breaks permanent stop the leak at the air conditioning unit. I've been to the building department. I talked to everything a two weeks ago at the farmers market. I've been to our office once a week, and I gave them all the copies from the lawyer and the papers they sent. I had to hire an attorney, matter of fact, over from Legal Aid. We finally went to court and the whole thing got dismissed because it's really nuisance. But the office manager made me move my furniture. Now my couch is in the middle. So the case I died, they can't bring a thing in there and carry me out. Also, my garden, they cut my butterfly bush, my elderberry. They removed my fencing, it's called a fencing. All it did is hold up the tomatoes. I need help, please.
I will.
Desperate. Four months, my blood pressure's been over 200.
Okay. All right. I will try to.
No, this is desperate because I, you know, in fury housing, also.
He's seeking three minutes.
Okay, I know the scenes are information. I want you to find out the information. How many of my neighbors left my earthly and is it dead or alive in a nursing home? Because I have two pictures on here from the apartments that were broken in.
Okay.
I will. The people are listening, okay? So this is horrible situation.
I will, I will come down. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate you coming. And Jamal, beautiful. Good to see you.
Good to meet you, Mayor. Good evening. My name is Jamal Bothard, director of Washtenaw County Chapel and Market Keeper. Also a part of the community violence intervention team, a couple of our esteemed, your esteemed colleagues here are as well. And I'm here to speak on the youth mini grant that I applied for in order to try to get a mural put up right across the block. So there is a 14-point recommendation list that this community violence intervention team put together. Ms. Mayor Lois reached out about a year ago. We've been meeting over a year now on how we can end this violence inflicted on young black and our young brown people in this community. And I won't get into all the points, but one of those points is putting a mural up to commemorate those that have been murdered to know why that's here. So I reached out to Corner Health. They have approved it on their board to go up on their wall right there in that parking lot. And so it'll be about, maybe about $15,000. So this youth mini grant will be a part of it in order to pay the D muralists, pay the young folks, and one young person who actually designed the mural, and young people to help put the mural up, pay for the supplies. So this will just be a part of it. But yeah, just wanted to give a little bit more detail on that youth mini grant application. And yeah, hopefully we did.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bothard. Are there anyone, is there anyone else that would like to speak at this time? Is there anyone online, Mr. The Rinder?
There is one individual online with her hand raised in her face, counsel for peace and justice. I'll allow him to speak now.
Hello. Good evening. This is Desiree Simmons. Hello, everybody. Good evening. I am speaking just a couple of things. One is just to say thank you to council and the city for the use of the freight house for the warming center over the past while and and also coming up. It's been a great community resource, so thank you for that. I also wanted to speak to the contract for the government consulting services. That's on the agenda. I'm glad it's coming up before council. I think that this is the time to stop that contract. It's $3,000 a month, and I'm sure that we all can think about different ways that can impact the community for spending $72,000 over the length of the contract, which is two years. This contract has really been a holdover since this was started as an experiment back in the 90s. And I am not sure what they're lobbying for in Lansing. You know, I think about community needs and things that have come up, like the need to get rid of the rent control preemption and connecting with other folks around the state around that. Is that work that they're doing? What does that look like? And how is it different from what could happen if we work in collaboration with our state officials that are, you know, work in collaboration with council? And so I would encourage council to vote no on that contract. Also, I just want to say too that I appreciate the council resolution and things against the license plate readers in the city. And I'm just wondering or encouraging conversations with the township since they are looking to put it around the city and don't seem to believe that the city residents should have a say in, in that. But I think that as a good neighbor, they should actually consider otherwise. So thank you for putting that out. And also, I hope that folks are engaging in that township conversation. And that's all I have for 10. Oh, no. The other thing I want to say is just speaking up in favor of the recycling carts, and especially as this could be a possibility for some cost savings and in things in terms of what we could do once, if there's bigger carts that we can change our pickups to every other week for that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Simmons. Are there any other, are there any others that would like to speak?
No other hands raised, certainly.
All right. Thank you. No other hands. We will close the public hearing. Thank you. Now, this time we have presentation, a proclamation and honor of Ronell Johnson, Councilmember Somerville, and Mayor for Towne Brown. All right. Thank you. Ronell Johnson. Whereas on March 24th, 2008, Ronell Johnson was convicted of a crime he did not commit. And whereas the false testimony and inconsistent evidence that lacks any real physical evidence, he was charged with armed robbery. And whereas the charge was further exacerbated by the denial of motions that would have clearly led to his exoneration. And whereas Ronell Johnson appealed his conviction, only to have it reaffirmed by the Michigan Court of Appeals, stating there is no proof the testimony during the trial was false. And whereas in late 2014, the Michigan Innocence Clinic at the University of Michigan Law School began reviewing Johnson's case. And during this time, a key witness to the conviction recanted her testimony. And whereas on January 28th, 2021, Johnson filed a motion for relief in Washtenaw County Court. Later that year, the Washtenaw County prosecutor, Ellie Savitt, responded to the motion and directed the newly created conviction integrity unit to review the case. And whereas the review of the case, the CIU contacted the Michigan Innocence Clinic, who filed a motion stating that testimony from a key witness had a plea deal receiving significant benefit from the, from the then prosecutor, which was not disclosed to the defense. And whereas on June 1st, 2022, Judge Patrick Conlin granted Johnson's motion for relief, vacating his conviction and dismissed the charges against him upon motion from the prosecutor. And Johnson was released from prison that afternoon. And now, therefore, I, Mayor Fortham, Nicole Brown, Ward 1, and Annie Somerville, Councilmember Ward 3, of the City of Exalani, on behalf of city council, do hereby rejoice in the fact that you are now free, but lament the many years that you were falsely imprisoned, given under my hand and seal. And this was presented on the city's behalf on September 11, 2022. From Annie and myself, we attended his welcome home ceremony on Sunday. And just to add some additional comments, Ronell was just so excited to see the recognition and members of the community, as well as his family and friends and members from the Ambassador Group and Survivor Speaks, Trishay Duckworth, all present to welcome him home in a public fashion and offer, you know, our gratitude for his work to have himself vindicated of, you know, a crime that he did not commit, as well as welcoming to the community and offer him opportunities to really get involved and reaffirmate to the community he loves and has always called home. And it was really important work that was done and important for us to be there. And I'm really humbled and honored that I was able to participate in that. Thank you very much. Okay, we now have a presentation from OHM regarding the Cross Street Bridge Study. So, Mr. Early or still got to hear me, it's taken.
Good evening, council. In June of this year, OHM completed a study of the Cross Street Bridge. The scope of the study was to do a survey of the bridge and surrounding areas and review different options for repair or replacement. OHM staff have been giving a presentation summarizing this study. And afterwards, staff is going to give a short presentation, which looks at the city's fiscal capacity and offers a recommended direction. So I want to introduce engineers Rachel Jackson, Kim O'Rear, and Ken Early from OHM. Kim O'Rear will be giving an overview of the bridge studies. Ken, take it away.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. My name is Kim O'Rear, and I'm a bridge engineer at OHM and was in charge of the Cross Street Bridge study. I've been working on the Cross Street Bridge and inspecting it for, it's going to date me probably close to 25 years. So I'm very familiar with the bridge. So the study encompassed, you go to the next slide. So as I mentioned, we did a topographic study, so we picked up on survey of the entire area so we would know what we were dealing with as far as dimensions and heights, so we could look at different options. So we picked up all of that, and then we reviewed some different bridge types. We met with some governing agencies on what would be required for crossing the Huron River. And we ultimately put together a full report that I believe Ron said you guys all have in your packets. Good with the next slide. So the next slide is a little one on the right, which I can still read from here. So some of the design considerations that we had were to improve water flow of the Huron River and review impacts to threatened endangered species, to maintain pedestrian facility on Cross Street and on the trench underneath Cross Street, while still maintaining the required height requirements for the, for the federal guidelines and to minimize impacts to the areas surrounding the bridges, the bridge, the businesses and sidewalks, et cetera. So the next one is on funding. So we did prepare some information. The city can apply. There's not unfortunately a ton of funding dedicated towards bridges, but Michigan Department of Transportation does have the local bridge program. The city has applied and received funding for other bridges through this program in the past. Cross Street would be eligible. Cross Street qualifies as, let's say, considered a large bridge, which is anything more than 50% of the region allocation. You guys are part of the university region. That number varies depending on how much funding is in the pot. Typically, that means anything over about $6 million-ish. That can go up, that can go down, falls into the big bridge category. Your bridge would be reviewed by the bridge council. As a whole, it's he has spared very well with the council, and typically things move forward and they allow funding. Based on the dollar figures that we have, I would expect that they would cap that funding at somewhere between a million and a million and a half at the most, just because there isn't that much funding to go around, so they do cap larger projects. It would automatically be forwarded onto the state board meeting, which for they look at for large bridge. I, there's a lot of bridges and a lot less money at that particular board. I would expect that your chances are less of getting chosen, but if you do again, I would think they would cap that. Typically, they look for outside sources of additional funding to try and support things that already have some additional funding, legion funding as well as other funding. And then the, a new grant opportunity is from US Department of Transportation. It's called the Bridge Investment Program. This is a new program, so applications are allowed for '22, '23, and '24. The application program for '22 just closed right around the first weekend, September. And I, it's to be of '23 and '24 that they will take applications. Being that it's a new grant, I can't tell you what historical data there is for your opportunity or chances to get that funding. In order to apply, the city does have to show that they have 20% of the funds available. So it would be 80% federal dollars, 20% city match. And you have to show that you have your 20% in order to apply. The bridge is in poor condition, so it meets the criteria for an application should the city choose to do that. Ron, do you want to give the financial presentation or do you go? And then we can answer questions from the whole thing.
Um, it's, uh, council, council has questions if you would just try.
Council, councilors, questions if you would just try and ask them, otherwise I'll.
Any questions from Council this time? Mr. Jones' chance.
I don't know much about this sort of thing, but could there be any impact from the dam removal even though the dam and the pound that I, you know, put it up to?
As far as the actual bridge goes, probably not at this point. There would need to be a full hydraulic study. We did a portion of a hydraulic study that would be required based on what's out there now. If the dam were to be removed, an additional hydraulic study would be required to be turned in to the Eagle Association for Review at that time.
And that's because of the supporting structure?
It's due to the amount of water that is currently in the Huron River. So if that changes, then it would need to be re-reviewed to make sure that the bridge could span the appropriate length and not impact downstream or upstream conditions.
Okay, but there wouldn't be any risks, you think, to the structure itself?
There shouldn't be risks to the structure. If it, if it were to break, that would be something different. If it is removed, that would be taken into consideration for downstream structures. Any other question?
Yes, are there, are, you know, there's limitations on, on, you know, like a cap on this. Is there an overall, I think, this is about a sixty million dollar bridge?
The bridge is, is well over six million dollars. Six million dollars is the cap for typically the amount of money that the university region, they get somewhere between twelve and thirteen million dollars in a typical year. If any one project goes more than fifty percent of that budget, so somewhere in the six, six and a half million dollars, it's automatically considered a large bridge. So it's a, it's a sliding scale. Because your bridge is more than six million dollars, it would automatically go to that. And even if it were slightly less than that or slightly more, the dollar figure that we're looking at for Cross Street will be a good bridge regardless unless there is some major influx of money that I'm unaware about.
Okay, Andrew, next slide please. So OHM gave the presentations. We are going to summarize some of the options that were outlined in a comparison chart that was placed in the packet. We're gonna look at financing options with the finance department or major roads fund, financial summary to see what we can afford. And then ultimately, we will provide a specific recommendation based on the study of those findings. Next slide please. I know it's difficult to read, but there are three options which were provided in the study, which could be under consideration. So there's a old bridge replaced with a two-span steel. So let me, let me backtrack a little bit, Kim, correct me if I make mistakes. But let me backtrack a little bit, kind of explain some of the terms I'm gonna be using through this. So the, when we talk about a bridge span, we talk about the area of the bridge between piers.
Underneath the structure, how many concrete elements do you see? Currently, we have three spans.
So, so that's gonna be what we reference as we're moving along. The other terms we're gonna use is gonna be superstructure and substructure. So just to kind of give counsel perspective, the superstructure is the beams, the deck of the bridge, essentially the top exclusive of the piers and the bottom supports. The substructure is the piers that come out of the water. It's the supports underneath. So a full replacement would be the removal and replacement of both substructure and the superstructure. And when we refer to just a superstructure replacement, we're just talking about the beams, the deck. So there are three options that were considered. The first is a bridge replacement with a two-span and a steel beam. So there wouldn't be a pier in the middle. It would be a little bit further apart on either side. The other option was a bridge replacement with a three-span with concrete beams, which is similar to the current configuration of the bridge as it is right now. And the third option is a superstructure replacement where we look at the replacement of the top deck of the bridge. So costing ground options, we'll talk about in future slide, but I wanted to highlight some key takeaways from this chart. There's like items that I want Council to remember. The bridge replacement is a considerably more expensive option than the superstructure replacement. It ranges, so, so the cost range is just, just, just the construction cost. For a superstructure replacement, it's about four point eight million dollars. And the replacements, if you go with the two-span, I believe it's fourteen point four million. And the placement with a three-concrete span is an eleven million dollar project. The bridge replacement to a two-span structure is a more environmentally friendly option because it allows for the restoration of river habitat due to no pier being in the middle of the river. If you replace the bridge with a three-span concrete structure, based on conversations that OHM teams have with the State of Michigan, the state may require the removal of the trench if that option is pursued. Superstructure placement option is the least expensive and will not require the removal of the trench or require any endangered species permitting from the state. It is likely less competitive from that U.S. DOT Bridge Investment Grant Program that OHM highlighted, but can still be competitive throughout that local bridge as, as Kim indicated, the city has tended to score rather well on. And then the last row is if you take no action, it's estimated that Cross Street Bridge will be closed to traffic around twenty thirty-two due to deterioration. Next slide please. So in the report, the comparison chart that OHM put together, there were some pros and cons. I've mentioned several of them, but a couple additional highlight for full bridge replacement, there's gonna be better alignment of the river to improve the natural flow. It will allow us to spread out major bridge repairs over, compared to some of the other bridges that we own, spread it out over different time periods, so we don't have a ton of expenditures all occurring within a short period of time. And then there's also the ability adds aesthetic options that we're unable to do for. An additional con of a full replacement is that it require a nine or more month closure. Next slide please. For the superstructure replacement, an added pro would be that you have a shorter bridge closure, so you're looking at four to six months. Some added cons, there will be more likely more rehabilitation costs to maintain the substructure over time. If the poor lineup of the river continue, there are very limited aesthetic options. And as I indicated, the asset repair schedules for all cities' bridges will be more closely grouped together. Next slide please. So what this spreadsheet does is it takes the cost in the prior spreadsheet and adds the soft costs or the engineering costs of the project or a total project cost. Typically, engineering costs are not permitted expenditures for the grants that we pursue and would likely have to be costs that were borne by the city. So the last two columns up there are the estimated total cost of the, of the options with the construction and engineering. Then the estimated city costs are those total costs less whatever grant funding we received in the realm, so. These costs range anywhere from fifteen point seven million dollars to two point four million dollars depending on what the option is. The next few sheets are gonna look at what bonding can look like for these scenarios. Slides, excuse me. Next slide please. So I want to thank Director Vastika for putting the spreadsheet together. It's a wonderful template. The spreadsheet looks at the options from a financing perspective, what a bond payment would look like and what financing would look like. The assumptions are five percent interest rate, twenty-year bond, which we came to after discussion with our bond council, and what an annual payment would look like for the city. So we prepared four spreadsheets which are in the presentation, which will look at what the bonding looks like with reserve contributions from the city of five hundred thousand, one million dollars, two million dollars before bonding. These estimates do not include any bond fees which may have an impact on final cost. Slide please. So the slide before, I apologize. Range, the bond amount ranges from fifteen point seven million to two point four, as I said, with yearly payments between one point two billion and a hundred ninety-two thousand over twenty years. Five hundred thousand dollar contribution. I'm not gonna go over all the spreadsheets, but, but Council can review them. They, they range from a substantial annual bond payment to, based on the grant that we received, to much lower costs of, if, if we do a contrib, is a two million dollar contribution from reserves with the superstructure replacement option. We're looking at a hundred thousand dollars a year or thirty-two thousand dollars a year depending on the funding source. So next slide. I think two more. And then one more, I apologize. So this slide is a summary of the financial status of our major streets fund or two oh two, which these projects most likely are funded from. I wanna focus on the row that looks at operation, the rows that look at operational revenues and expenditures. These are our expenditures exclusive of road capital projects. So based on our actual priors and some of our future estimates, we are anticipating that we will have somewhere between eight hundred thousand and nine hundred thousand dollars per year in funds available for capital expenditures. This can be seen on the row. It's closer to the bottom under summary. That's operational deficit or surplus. So it's right underneath that gold subheading of summary. So it's outlined there in the different fiscal years. So these are the funds that we use for any known overlay or reconstruction or other large capital road and storm sewer project. The engineering fees and other soft costs for these projects also come out of these funds. And I want to highlight that these ones are necessary to manage the federal or state loan dollars that we receive from lots or end that. So the Huron River Drive project that's coming up in twenty twenty-three, the West Cross project we did last year and for the, actually the Forest Street Bridge and some of the other local bridge programs, the matching, the engineering come from these annual accounts that we have. As I indicated, typically those funds require a twenty-seven percent match for construction costs. The part of the city to pay the full cost of design, construction, engineering, which ends up being twenty-five to thirty percent of construction cost. I wanna emphasize that using too large of a percentage of these funds for that service would substantially limit the ability of the city to invest in current road and storm sewer infrastructure, which also needs attention. In short, we have limited room to work with and pay for that service out of our two oh two major streets fund. Next slide please. As I mentioned in the last slide, the opportunity cost using Major Streets Fund to cover such debt service is essentially less money to invest in our current road and stormwater infrastructure. We have four other bridges that we own. And thankfully, we have secured undig local bridge grant funding to rehabilitate the Forest Street Bridge, which is going to occur next year in twenty twenty-three. I do preventative maintenance work on the Forge and Factory Street Bridges in twenty twenty-five, which will bring these bridges to good condition. Prospect, I also want to highlight that the Prospect Street Bridge is in a similar condition to the Cross Street Bridge, Cross Street Bridge, excuse me. It also requires a superstructure replacement with a similar level of cost. Unfortunately, without an alternative revenue source, it's unlikely that the city will be financially able to complete projects on both the Cross Street Bridge and the Prospect Road Bridge. The federal infrastructure dollars, I know the communications that we had over the last several years have talked about this federal infrastructure package and some of the federal funding that could come down. But the infrastructure dollars for bridges, which are given in the state, were rolled into local bridge program. So there is gonna be more funding available in that program in coming years, but the allocations are similar to what they are now. And the rules of the program are the same as they have been in prior years. It has limitations on how much money can be allocated for any one project. As Ken had mentioned, it's three million dollars. The cap is larger for the federal program, but again, it's gonna be a more competitive grant. Next slide please. So based on the study and based on the analysis of the city's financial options and financial circumstances, our recommendations are to pursue the superstructure replacement option. It's, it's really, you know, to kind of be frank, it's really the only option that can financially work for the city. We're recommending that approximately half million dollars of reserve of the Major Streets Fund be contributed towards this project. Some of the funding and some of the years, over the last few years, for various reasons, our revenues have been a little bit higher than we initially projected. So we have some added funds that we weren't anticipating and believe that could contribute towards this project. We're also recommending that the city consider recommending at least a half million, one point five million in reserves from the general fund or other areas to help offset some of the debt service that would go on two oh two. We recommend that the city, when, you know, pursue both, I'm not local bridge funding and U.S. DOT Bridge Investment Program grant opportunities and provide a commitment in there to issuing a bond to cover the remaining costs of the superstructure replacement. Looking at the financial summary that we had put together, the utilizing the superstructure replacement program, if we have funded it at the two million dollar option, the annual debt service payments for that would be in the hundred thousand dollar to thirty-two thousand dollar a year range, which given the, our, what our operational surpluses that we use for capital would be feasible and should limit the impact that, the financial impact that the city would have, so it'd still have some additional dollars to spend on our existing infrastructure. So that concludes the presentation and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Agent. There any questions for Mr. Agent? Yes, Mr. Jones.
Yeah, how much of a concern is the substructure? I mean, I'm guessing it's sort of minimal based on the recommendations from staff.
It, so the, the substructure will require additional preventative maintenance and those costs involve over time, but it is still anticipated that the life of the substructure with proper maintenance can still go for years, which is about the, the life of a superstructure that Kim.
We built in money that there are several current problems with. There are several current problems with, that one of the piers that are out there right now. In the estimate, we did include for basically a replacement of the top portion of the pier, so not the stem part, but the part that kind of lies at the top, willing to replace as part of the superstructure replacement. The remainder of their substructure will need routine maintenance and some patching during the replacement, but all in all is in fair, good shape.
Thanks. And moving on to bond issue is five percent? Really, is that the best we can hope for?
That, that was the number provided by our finance director. I know he's had some conversation with financial consultants about it. That's an estimation and not a hundred percent.
Any other questions? Well, from personal experience of driving over a bridge or with black tops for that, well, this doesn't work. So I'll still have to decide how much force they're willing to pay for. And as I read over them, they, I kept thinking, you know, to might not be the best financially, but the best for the bridge. It sounds like it would be better. might not be the best financially, but the best for the bridge, it sounds like, it would be better just to totally rejoice the bridge. From what I, from what I read today, and from what I have, you know, seen that it's there as long. It's also my first jump.
Yeah. From, I said twenty thirty is like the timeline, but-
Yeah, twenty thirty-two is what's-
Um, would it make sense to, like, limit the shift wave on the bridge now? Maybe it's a lot?
It already has some variation on it. I think, yeah. It already has some limitations on it, the waves across it, or reinforcing it? I don't think we are.
I, I, I don't have an answer to that. I, I, we'd have to double check with the police department. The way, the way the bridge, you know, currently, right now, bridge has weight restrictions on it. So, you know, the weight of the trucks that are limited going across the bridge, as the bridge further deteriorates and you're correcting them on, as the bridge further deteriorates, we'll start sealing closures on the edges, and then, then eventually.
Yeah, I would expect a decrease in the size of the trucks that can go over as the years go on, or late closures, or full closures.
Is there anything preventing the city right now from just completely making trucks and larger people-free route?
We currently have an ordinance which prevents trucks from using that street as a through passage, because that, that part is not part of state trunk line. That's part of the city road system. So unless they're specifically using that route to make a delivery in depot town, or, or both of those businesses, they technically are all within, so they're not able to-
Okay, and then my last question is just really to the sidewalk. So the south side of the bridge, that sidewalk, um, is like crumbling. Is there anything that we can do, short term, to fix that?
We'll, we'll have a discussion with the wish, uh, because I, I actually, I went there today at an admissions meeting, and I seen to the school's regard, it's one of my concerns. So, we'll have that discussion this week.
Okay, awesome, thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Okay, so we're talking about a twenty-year bond, and then this, the superstructure, we would anticipate lasting about forty years before major, with their-
That's the best data we have, which the state tells us. And for the most part, I would say, in that community, such as Xolani, and the usage you get out of it, that four years before major work needs to be done, there will be some amount of effort put into it before that, but yes, superstructures are supposed to last forty years.
Oh, we've been known to make it stretch.
Uh, your entire, your entire bridge was replaced in the early ten, maybe eighties. I don't know the gear off the top of my head, but eighty-four, eighty-four sounds about right.
That's pretty close. So we're talking about twice the rate of the bond issue, which I think makes sense, so. Okay, yeah.
You have a question or comment? Gina, thank you both, thank you all for the report, and thank you for being here and sharing with us that. You know, we have a bridge that needs to be put. You gotta do something, one way or another. Okay. Moving on, ordinance is the first reading, ordinance number fourteen oh two. There's an ordinance entitled, ordinance of tolls and emergency moratorium on issuance of new marijuana permits.
Resolution number twenty-two-two-zero-seven, resolved by the Council of the City of Xolani, and the emergency ordinance entitled an ordinance to impose a moratorium on the issuance of new marijuana permits, but sale of dispensing of marijuana in the city of Xolani for sixty days. Be approved and given immediate effect in ISO move.
It's been moved and supported. Questions? Next question?
Yeah, I, I just, based on some of the, hours we heard doing audience participation, this was intended to only affect retail. And that is sort of the, the question that we're working through with, with planning. So, wanted to make sure everyone knew that.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Jones, I mean, Mr. will have to hand it up.
Yeah, I, I read through this and didn't have time to go back to the previous thing, so I was just like, for my own clarification, I'm assuming for the people who are out there, this is adoption of the second emergency, sixty-day marijuana moratorium ordinance. The first one, I mean, this, this seems a little confusing to me, that this was brought to the council for hundred eighty days without, you know, seeing exactly what could happen with the emergency, moratoriums. So the labeling of this as the second emergency is confusing to me, because this is the first sixty days, so Mr. Garby speaks.
Yes, certainly. Good afternoon, good evening, council.
Good evening.
And I just come to pass the emergency moratorium, that's a request of staff, for more time to redo the permitting process and cover all marijuana permits. That was only good for sixty days because of the charter limitation. And so looking at that, the staff would like it to go for the hundred eighty days, or hundred eighty days. So looking at it, sort of to avoid any lapse in the protection, we decided that we'll pass, if council agrees, a second moratorium, according to the charter for sixty days, but then also pass a regular ordinance that would be good for a hundred eighty days. The thing with the regular ordinance requires two, two readings, and it's not good for thirty days after. So this would give a, a, a continuous stream of protection with the second emergency ordinance taking up just as small part of the time.
The, the first emergency ordinance that stated a hundred eighty days is not null and void altogether. It's just limited to sixty days. So then this is the day sixty-one through one-twenty.
Correct.
And then the other one is a hundred eighty days.
Whatever, can, can I be around that?
So with a hundred eighty days going into effect after the second reading in thirty days, that stretches this out to more than a hundred eighty days, right?
Yes, correct.
So that's total about-
About two hundred.
Two hundred, two hundred forty days.
Two, two hundred, that's a good. Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Any other questions or comment?
Oh, one other thing. The original moratorium was all inclusive, but staff looked at it again, they decided that they really didn't need a moratorium on the permits other than the retail. So what this does is it limits it only to retail and other permitting processes as revealed in the content.
But the original moratorium covers everything for sixty days. And then this becomes more specific at day sixty-one.
Correct.
Okay. An a hundred eighty-day regular moratorium only covers dispensing and sale.
Correct.
Mr. Jones.
Uh, yeah, and the other piece I wanna add is that I think a lot of this will be more or less resolved at some point soon after our joint meeting with planning. Just to sort of get time to, to get our heads together with them as well.
All right, seeing no hands. Mr. Hulango, would you call the role?
Mayor, yeah, the public here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, the public here, is there anyone who'd like to comment on this ordinance? Yes, you may come.
I just wanted to quickly reiterate again, that resilience, the scope has been limited in these two moratoriums, proposals for moratoriums. And that I also did wanna extend my expertise, I specialize in cannabis licensing and compliance. So if any city ever has any questions, I am more than willing to provide my services for free.
Sorry, thank you, of course. We should, thank you. Right, uh, is there anyone else who'd like to, here to open here? Hey, none, maybe we have the resolution to close. Public hearing.
Resolution number twenty-two-two zero, resolved by the Council of the City of Xolani, the public hearing. For an emergency ordinance entitled an ordinance to impose a moratorium on issuance of new marijuana permits for sale of dispensing of marijuana in the city of Xolani for sixty days, we officially close, and I so move forward.
They moved and supported on our favor of codes in public hearing?
All right.
I. Motion carried. Now we will vote on to resolution itself.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yeah.
Mr. Jones' chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcox?
Yes.
Motion carries with five yes, two absent.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Jones, I believe you have the next ordinance, ordinance number fourteen oh three, and ordinance entitled, ordinance to impose a moratorium on issuance of new marijuana permits.
Resolution number twenty-two-two, that two zero nine, resolved by the Council of the City of Xolani, that ordinance entitled an ordinance to impose a moratorium on issuance of marijuana permits for sale or dispensing of marijuana in the city of Xolani for one hundred eighty days, you approved on first reading, and I so move, or?
It's been moved and supported, any questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, we were open to a public hearing, with anyone here to speak on this ordinance?
I won't speak a third time, but I will just keep my heart prepared in case of anything.
All right, seeing none, maybe we have the ordinance, the resolution to close the public hearing.
Resolution number twenty-two-two-zero, resolved by the Council of the City of Xolani. For the public hearing, for ordinance entitled an ordinance to impose a moratorium on issuance of marijuana permits for sale or dispensing of marijuana in the city of Xolani for one hundred eighty days, be officially closed, and I so move forward.
It's been moved and supported, any questions or comments? Seeing none, Mr. Hulango, would you call the role, please?
Prior to doing that, council, just, just so you're aware, prior to the moratorium being set, there was an application that was submitted and it's almost reviewed, so there will be an additional permit if staff sign up.
Thank you.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yeah.
Mr. Jones' chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcox?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Motion carries with five yes.
Two yes.
Thank you. The consent agenda. Resolution number twenty-two-two dash two eleven, resolved by the Council of the City of Xolani, if it's only be approved. Resolution number twenty-two dash two twelve. Resolution number twenty-two dash two thirteen. Resolution number twenty-two dash two fourteen. Resolution number twenty-two dash two fifteen, and I so move forward. It's been moved and supported. Any questions, some discussion? All right, would you call the role, Mr. Hulango?
Mr. Jones' chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcox?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yeah.
Motion carries with five yes. Two absent.
Thank you. Resolution twenty-two twenty-two sixteen, improving the contract with government consulting services. Please, you have that, Mr. Wilcox.
Resolution to approve contract, resolution number twenty-two-two-six, resolution to approve contract with governmental consulting services, Inc. It was all by the Council of the City of Xolani, that the renewal contract with government consultant services, Inc. of one-twenty North Washington Square, Suite One Ten, Lansing, Michigan, for a two-year term B, and hereby is approved, the mayor and city clerk are authorized to sign the contract for an audit app of the city subject to the approval of the city attorney, as to form, so move, supported.
It's been moved and supported. Discussion. Mr. Jones.
Yeah, after, well, before our previous meeting, I think most of us had discussions with, with the folks at GSI and, GCS, I, and I think, seems like they are willing to be more accountable, and I admire the workforce, and we know exactly what we are getting for the money. It also appears that, you know, they've done a lot of work in the past, that they just didn't really communicate to us very well, so, I think the limited timeframe, the two years instead of three, and then keeping the rate the same is a, a good faith effort on their part. And I'm feeling more comfortable with some of the changes that they've already made in terms of personnel, and then some of the changes that they intend to make in the future, so I will support moving the contract along.
Thank you. Any other questions, the discussion? Mr. Wilcox?
Um, you know, this came up, you know, when I saw the contract last time, I was somewhat surprised that there wasn't more accountability built into the contract. And I see that, that's still the case. I, I, this doesn't really change except for the two years versus three years. And all the information that was relayed by Desmond when he was here has not been incorporated, so I'm not gonna support this. I want the same, the whole point was to have a better contract that held people accountable for the money we're giving them. And this contract is not different than the first one, except for the term. So they took our input, they should have put it in the contract and come back, so I'm not gonna support it. And I, that's not that I don't like their services, I wanted their contract.
This is, yeah, I was having the impression that we were gonna have a twelve-month contract. For this, so, and I don't know if anybody else was having the same impression that I was, but I'm not comfortable with signing on for longer than twelve months at this time. So I'd like to make a motion to amend this from twenty-four months to twelve months.
It's been moved and supported to amend the, request from two years, twenty-four months to twelve months. Wow, discussion on that? Mayor Proton?
Yeah, just to add that I was under the impression that was a discussion that we had when we had the presentation. And so I would be more comfortable with them for twelve months, especially being that with the same sentiments that Councilmember Wilcox ensured that some of the information would went to his up more in the contract than we discussed at length here.
Thank you. We should hand up Mr. Jones.
Yeah, I guess maybe the reduction was a reduction of twelve months, not two twelve months. But, I think, might be appropriate to, for us to counter back and incorporate some of the other items just so that they're explicit in the contract that were presented the last time. But that would be other amendments, I suppose.
So you're, are you asking to apply a friendly amendment to?
No. I think, no, I think that's fair, that was the majority's understanding.
Any other comments? Well, Mr. Hulango, would you call the role on the-
Amendment. On the amendment, Mr. Jones' chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcox?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yeah.
Motion carries of five yes, two absent.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll take another amendment. The summer bill. Yeah, I'd also like to make amendment to amend of the terms. Um, I'd like to strike out continued thereafter on month-to-month basis. Um, I'd like to just strike that, actually. We'd like to strike, what was the, the, the month-to-month base, the automatic month-to-month base, the basis without a ninety-day prior notice? It's at the very bottom. It's on page, where it's on page one.
Oh, my God.
Yeah. Where are you? I'm on page eighty. Page eighty?
Eighty-two of the contract.
Six point one of the contract.
You're on page eighty?
Eighty-two.
Eighty-two? Term of this agreement, we're now. Okay, so you're wanting to change what a net last, uh, I want to strike out the automatic month-to-month basis. So what do you want it to read?
This, the term of this agreement shall be for twelve months? What, simply we determine this agreement shall be for a minimum of twelve months? Or we just may be amended from twenty-four to twelve, to twelve months? So this would also need to be adjusted to say this, the term of this agreement shall be for twelve months, period. So.
Take out the minimum.
Don't worry. It wouldn't make sense to be with it. Yeah, so, um, who seconded mine?
And we did.
Yes.
So I would like to make a motion to amend, um, six point one, just to read the term of this agreement shall be for twelve months, period. Striking out minimum, replacing twenty-four months with twelve months and removing the, um, month-to-month basis support.
Is the move then supported? Discussion? Mr. Jones Chance?
Yeah, so this would essentially move the next contract negotiations to be in, uh, next June. Or, well, really it had to be finalized by then, right? Because, um, we'd have to have a new contract finalized before this time next year. Um, and so I guess the question with the removal of the month-to-month basis is what happens if there's work in process? And what do we do about that if the deadline's missed? Uh, maybe it might be wise to minimize the, um, the number of months in the month, in the month-to-month basis to maybe three months or, you know, no more than three months or something like that, just to give us a little bit of cushion. I'm just sort of thinking about, yeah, unless we have things going on and.
The way that I'm thinking is hopefully there would be conversation before the term expires. Otherwise, I mean, I think that's part of the problem in the past is it just rolled over, um, and then questions have never been asked before about what contracts. But I think this prevents that from happening again and it winds up aside with the service. Um, you know, nine to ten months from now, we could be more proactively without not continuing, if you mean.
Mr. Bar, do you have some wisdom for us?
Well, I'd like to find out that, uh, this is actually an offer for the contract that they presented. And if you change it, it will be a counter offer. They will go back to them for revision and they have to decide if they'll accept those terms. So you can do that or you could table an asset, new version, come up with your, uh, requirements.
Thank you.
And I'd like to table this and remand it to them to include the, uh, is a motion to table currently.
We have a motion.
I would like to add my motion.
Thank you. Mr. Will Coxon?
I'd like to make a motion to remand this to, uh, GCSI, um, to incorporate the, the discussion that we had, um, and the terms that, uh, council person. Somerville just outlined, um, and bring it back to us.
Is the move then supported to table? Um, this, and until we get the, kind of go back to them ahead of it. You know, reach out to us again. Essentially, that is the, the motion. As there was a support, yes, so, uh, Mr. Jones Chance?
Um, yeah, could we, um, just be sure to ask, I guess, that some of those things that, some of those things that were discussed in the presentation and other conversations just be made explicit in the contract?
Mr. Bar, do we have to table this for a certain day or according to Robert?
I recommend that you table it to the next meeting.
Alright, thank you. And so, recommendation, uh, time would be until the next meeting. Um, is there any other discussion before we go? Mr. Hulango, would you call the roll on the motion table, please?
Motion to table, Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Summerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yeah.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Will Coxon?
Yes.
Motion carries with five yes to yes.
Thank you. Alright, um, resolution twenty twenty-two to eighteen. Uh, or approving ordinance thirteen ninety-nine, ordinance entitled an ordinance to amend chapter one oh six.
I have that resolution.
You have that one.
Number two zero two two dash two one eight, resolved by the council of the city of Salini that an ordinance to amend chapter one oh six, article five, section one oh six dash four five four A of Code of Ordinances, City of Salini, just students' disposal rates, approved on second and final reading and I so move forward.
Is the move then supported? Any questions or discussion? We see now we should call the roll.
Councilmember Summerville? Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Will Coxon?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yeah.
Motion carries with four yes, one no, two yes.
I believe you have the next, uh, also.
Resolution number two zero two two dash two one nine, resolved by the council of the city of Salini that an ordinance to amend chapter one oh six, article five, section one oh six dash four five four B of Code of Ordinances, doing which why rates in the city of Salini be approved on second and final reading and I so move forward.
The move then supported? Any questions, discussion? They see none, we should call the roll, Mr. Hulango, please?
Mayor Richardson?
No.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Will Coxon?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Summerville?
Yes.
Motion carries with four yes, one no, two yes.
Thank you. Uh, resolution, uh, number twenty twenty-two, um, dash two twenty, approving a delegate and alternate for the annual convention. I believe you have that there, Proton?
I do. Um, so I'm just going to read it with the blanks and then we can discuss. Is that how you want to do this, Mayor? Or is it perfect? The last time I did it, the other way, people was on that shit, though.
It's sorry now, I'm sorry, I didn't try to.
No, I'm saying, I'm going to read it with the blanks, um, because the last time I inserted something, there was some contention.
You can read with the blank.
Alright, that blank, be appointed as delegate and blank, be appointed as alternate for the annual convention of the Michigan Municipal League to be held in the city of Michigan, October nineteenth through twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two. And I so move.
Move then supported that we appoint an alternate and, uh, I meant appoint a delegate and an alternate. Uh, questions, discussion? The summer bill.
Alright, yeah, I'd like to be a delegate.
But you're a person.
Oh, yeah, I was just going to suggest that you. But, I mean, I don't know who wants to start out, but I don't know.
I would, I would like to be a delegate. I am already, um, registered, but I will certainly.
If the council members are, are registered, go to the conference.
I did it last time. Have to, you know, have to go with some.
Yeah. Alright, so what do we do? Uh, we could, we make amendments to do this thing?
Yeah, you can make a.
Alright. With, uh, Mayor Proton Brown? I move that Councilmember Summerville be appointed as the delegate and Mayor Richardson be appointed as the alternate for, um, our. Where?
It's been moved and supported that, uh, council member Summerville be the delegate and Mayor Richardson, Alan Richardson be the alternate. Um, Mr. Hulango, would you call the roll?
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Will Coxon?
Yep.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Summerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yeah.
Motion carries with five yes, two yes.
Alright, thank you. Um, resolution twenty twenty-two dash two twenty-one, I believe you have that, Mayor Proton.
I do.
Mayor, that was just on the, the motion to amend, not yet, uh, we'll have to vote on the, or the resolution at the whole.
Oh, okay, I thought that was filling in the blanks, okay. Uh, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Will Coxon?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Summerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yeah.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Motion carries with five yes.
Alright, thank you. Now we're ready for two two one.
Alright. Resolved by the council of the city of Salini, whereas in the recently concluded fiscal year twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three, the city council, the city council approved a twenty-five thousand dollar grant to organizations that serve the youth in the city. And whereas Washington's My Brothers Keeper is an organization currently serving the youth in the city of Salini. And whereas Washington's My Brothers Keeper has submitted a grant based from five thousand dollars. And now therefore be resolved that the Salini City Council approves a mini grant to Washington's My Brothers Keepers in the amount of five thousand dollars to support programs assisting community youth through their academic efforts and I so move.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any questions, discussion? Your hand up if you saw me?
Yeah. Yeah, I just want to say that I am glad to see this come forward. Uh, I'm often reminded how many people don't know that this mini grant exists. Um, I mentioned it to Jamal a few months ago, um, and that's, he didn't know about it. So I'm glad that it's going to go towards a project through the, um, Brown's dimension recommendations. And, um, it'll be not too far into the fall, so excited to support it and glad that more people are learning about this, um, grant opportunity that we have.
If you have any other, Mr. B. Jones Chance?
Um, yeah, I'm trying to remember some of the discussions around this and that. I think the balance of these funds maybe will be provided by the county or likely will be, um, but, uh, this is, this, uh, five times the maximum permitting grant, is that right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Alright, go ahead.
To your hand up? Yeah. Yeah, um, speaking of gaps in the funding, um, we could also, we have our social equity fund that exists. It, it, we take one thousand dollars from every permit, um, for marijuana applications. And I think the last time I checked, we're bringing in twenty-one thousand dollars in that, um, act of money sitting aside for social equity. And I think this would probably fall into, um, the broad parameters that we put into that. Um, so if you're interested, um, you can have it on the next agenda.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yeah, I, I say maybe we could, um, pledge an additional thousand dollars from that fund should there be a shortfall.
Cool.
But I'm, I'm pretty sure that the county's going to be providing a lot of funding for this.
There is, there is funding for the other ten thousand that I was like, I understood. But if you want that, you need to make, put that in a motion. Yeah, I'll, I'll follow up with Brian in between council meetings, nothing more. Alright, thank you. Any other discussion on the five thousand dollar grant? Being, uh, Mr. Hulango, would you call roll, please?
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Summerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yeah.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Will Coxon?
Yes.
Motion carries with five yes to yes.
Alright, thank you. Resolution twenty twenty-two dash two twenty-two.
All the twos, I'm done.
Okay. Resolve by the council of the city of Salini, whereas the city has been awarded grants for the purpose of recycling carts for eligible households in the city. And whereas the city has received votes for the purchase of five thousand ninety-six gallon recycling carts. And whereas the use of recycling carts increases resident recycling and reduces risk of employee injury. And whereas the city has a goal in our sustainability plan to reduce the amount of waste entering landfills. Now therefore be resolved that the city council of the city of Salini approves the purchase of five thousand recycling carts. Cascade cart solutions to two hundred and ninety-two thousand four hundred and fifty dollars with any change orders to be approved by the city manager and I so.
Support.
It's the move then supported. Mr. Acres, you have something for?
Sure, I'll just do a quick summary. So the city is, all of you know, has been awarded grants to purchase cycling carts. Um, as a result, we reached out to three car companies, this list is pricing for the manufacturer and delivery of these carts. Cascade Cart Solutions was the lowest responsive dinner, uh, which means the scope of work needed to comply with the grant requirements. Uh, this whole work includes the manufacture of five thousand ninety-six gallon carts. Uh, it's going to be a black cart, blue lip, the assembly of the recycling carts and delivery to eligible households. Uh, we've also purchased some additional carts. We got an expansion of the city's recycling program for certain multifamily residential units as well. Uh, purchase can be fully covered by grant funds and it's anticipated that the cart rollout will occur around the first week of April, um, within a few, give or take a few weeks. Uh, this will allow the city necessary time to do the educational mailings, uh, that are required by the grant and to consider potential program changes, uh, to encourage efficiencies with new carts. There's a one to two week timeframe that they'll be delivered in, uh, to all of the eligible households for her recycling program. Um, we are putting together information which will be brought forward at a later date regarding details for the multifamily program expansion and the potentially transitioning to once every two week collection. Uh, the educational component for the carts does include a mailing which staff has been working with the nonprofit recycling partnership on and a cart packet which will be delivered with the recycling carts, just to identify what you're able to recycle. Um, additional mailings may occur based on program changes and that will be decided based on a future discussion with council. Um, every eligible household in the city who's currently in our program will get a recycling cart delivered. So whether or not to participate in the program right now or not, just goes to get a recycling cart. And, uh, you, there's going to be, I think, three or four hundred extra for, uh, some of the multifamily recycling options. So we put together some information for it to be, uh, kind of an opt-in program. Uh, so we're, we're kind of working on some information for that. I have it written down for, uh, for buying and presenting it at a future date.
Thank you.
Happy to answer the questions.
Um, Summerville? So I have a question about this multifamily future. When you say that, do you mean, um, like larger houses, like the sorority and community houses that have currently are now allowed to participate in the?
So, so, yes, so the way, the way we're anticipating, the way at least I'm, I had planned the rolled out, the rollout, excuse me. I planned the rollout and the instructions that I'm leaving are, it's, it's going to be a phased in approach. It's going to be an opt-in program because, uh, the way our program is established, we need the recycling carts to get to the road in order to.
Yeah.
And so we have to have, uh, the landlords or somebody agree to do that and then we do the rules. Um, and then we'll do the recycling carts if it's the road, you know, we'll take care of it. But initially, what I was hoping was that we'd start a little slowly. We'd start with five to eight units, so some of those buildings and we, we move from eight to twelve and then kind of keep going. Or I don't believe we're going to be able to service any of the large apartment complexes, um, just because I think it's beyond the scope of our equipment and staffing capacity at this time. But I think based on what I've looked at, I think we should be able to handle like all of the neighborhood, the multifamily neighborhood.
That's two more questions.
Yes.
Would say like parkage, would each, like, how will get one there?
Uh, I believe so.
Okay.
I was efficient, I, we, we have to have a conversation about.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, yeah, I guess, but I get to the start. And then for buildings in some of the downtown areas, I know that like that could be a problem because you would need to get to the road.
We, we've had some conversations about how to address that. So, so in the downtown areas, there's a couple of challenges. The way, the way they handle trash in downtown areas now is there's several dumpsters scattered around. It's, it's, you require a bay user to use the dumpsters. What has occurred in the past in other communities where they had a similar arrangement, provide a recycling dumpster? Is it just ends up getting filled with trash?
Right.
And, and it, it defeats the purpose of having a recycling dumpster. So having that standalone option, we don't believe is feasible. There's also, you know, the other alternative, which you typically see in areas where you have higher density residential, as you see, you know, people put carts next to the dumpster corals. And we have a separate corral for recycling carts off the dumpsters. There's concern on our end that, that that would just get filled with trash too. So what we're thinking for the downtown areas is maybe for some of the residents who live in the downtown areas, rather than providing carts for just, if anybody wants it, one of the red bins and then they can put it out your normal collection day or a different collection day. We're still trying to talk about how to, that, but, but it is being considered.
Okay, so like in deep, so Tom, for example, a lot of the businesses now are participating in a recycling program. Obviously they have more recycling. So I guess, yeah, for like them, like each building would actually need a few of them based on what I see for their recycling. But it might make it easier, I think, on people picking up their recycling, because right now I watch it when they pick up on Wednesday mornings and usually there's just a lot. So I don't know what, are these carts going to like connect so they just flip or they still going to physically need to be?
So the, the, the carts, our equipment right now and the new vehicle we purchased is equipped with a cart tip around the back. So our staff will be able to roll it to the back of the truck and it'll pick up the arm bar and tip it.
Okay.
For them.
Yeah.
Eventually, and we have a purchase for a new recycling truck budget and budget this year. Eventually, the goal is to transition to a fully automated system, similar to the trucks they have in Ann Arbor, where they just drive up. They have the robotic arms to pick it up. There's a couple of advantages of doing it that way, you know, A, you don't have employee injury, but B, you really only need one person operating truck instead of two. So there's operational efficiencies that go with it and, and, you know, that, that you could have there too.
Okay, that's, in that case, it would actually make more sense for some of the businesses to have like a few, is that in a safe time and later? Okay, thanks, Mr. Jones Chan.
Yeah, my next question, my question is actually another business question because obviously we can't set things out alongside anymore and just for restaurant type businesses, you know, like, right, it's, um, things aren't always shaped to be easily broken down and definitely not to fit into a ninety-six gallon container, so. Yeah, I have a little concern that this might result in a lot more things being put in the trash. But I guess that's pretty minor. Is there, would there be enough to go around for, you know, some of the businesses, at least in deep, to get extra bins?
So, so we're purchasing, I believe, about a little over three hundred bins in addition to the service.
Thirty thousand.
Yeah. So there, there should be some additional bins. I, I know the direction I'm going to leave, we're going to ask and talk to the businesses participating in the recycling program. I don't see a scenario where, and even with, with our residential customers as well, I don't see situation where we're going to do what some other communities have done, where it says you have to put everything into the cart, especially with some of the larger cardboard boxes, things that just doesn't work. It gets stuck, it takes additional time. So I think there's always going to be some element of stuff being placed out at the curb that our crews are going to have to get out and manually unload, manually load. But I anticipate that, which is going to be in conversations with some businesses participating in the program to see how many cars are needed. And then what their, their waste stream looks like.
Okay, so our F A Qs might be a little different than what's presented here?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, Mayor Proten, just one simple question. So with these new cards, the items that we're allowed to recycle always remain the same?
Yes. Yes.
Any other question, comment? Being that Mr. Helengel, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yeah.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Will Coxon?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Motion carries a five yes, two yes.
You're wrong. I have to stay in line from side number two to get on. Uh, resolution twenty twenty-two dash two, two, three, approving the removal of Edward Robinson and Kate McLaughlin from Human Relations Commission. Resolution number twenty twenty-two dash two, two, three, resolved by the Council of the City of Zalani, whereas due to the inability to meet quorum, the Human Relation Commission has not met since December of twenty twenty-one. Now therefore be it resolved that the Human Relation Commission members Edward Robinson and Kate McLaughlin and sorry, hand drive the clerk to provide a notice of disapproval. I saw the warrant. It's been moved and supported. Any questions, discussion? Mr. Jones Chan?
Yeah, I posed this question informally before the meeting, really about the current role of the Human Relations Commission and if perhaps their inability to do that has sort of defeated their function, you know, according to the ordinance. I, I think we did have some discussion about that because that might be, it might be a cause for some of the absenteeism that we seem to have with this commission in particular. And it could also be that there's not a lot of clear direction for them or, I'm just curious if anyone has any ideas as to why the absenteeism seems to be so high in this commission in particular?
You want to have that conversation now or?
Yeah. Let me have a quick, quick one now because.
Mayor Proten, so I don't have an answer for people's absenteeism as I can't really, I don't know why people don't show up individually. What I do know is that previous iterations of this body were meeting and they were meeting consistently up until almost, you know, this point that's noted in the resolution. So I think that when I've been attending, folks are showing up and there are new people who are coming on who want to participate. But then we have folks who are already on who are not showing up and so there's just never a forum to actually move forward and even discuss any of the things you're asking about as we've been appointing new members to, um, the body. But I'm the same old as you overall as to like what really is going on with the, the commission overall with absenteeism. I know that the clerk had sent out an email asking members even to respond individually, like privately, if they had like, you know, reasons why they were not attending or if they just were not attending. And I don't know if folks are responding to you only and not including me, but I haven't, nobody's been responding to that either, at least when they're not going to show up. So I also think that when you break their expectations, that, that, and, and some kind of boundary around it, what are we doing here? What's the commitment to this? There would be a difference, we have to be able to meet to actually have those conversations. And so with no forum, there's no conversation and then the cycle continues. So that's what my brand has been. I know I've been doing a pretty heavy recruitment when I brought in the folks at a lot of these community events recently who are interested in participating. And just haven't, you know, gotten around to maybe applying even up from this weekend at both events that I was attending, the folks who are interested on, in participating in this body in particular. But again, that was just this weekend. So I think we would see, we could see an uptick in folks applying to be members and who would be willing to come in and, and do the work and kind of revamp on the commission and have some, some action items that they could be working on. But it takes having a buddies to actually have a formal meeting to, to even get any of that going.
How many people are we short at this?
So the, the body has nine seats. There, with these two removed, they'll have four under bylaws state that they have to have at least four members to meet quorum. So it's potentially they don't meet quorum next time as well. Well, they don't actually have a meeting scheduled, so we just kind of have one set and we keep trying to get people to come. No one's come. And, you know, we have to allocate staff, we have to allocate resources to this and it's, uh, it's the domination.
Yeah. Mr. Somerville?
Yeah, so I guess, um, there's like tons, actually, there's lots of guidance in the actual ordinance itself. I think the problem we're running into is attendance, but with the removal of these two, the most recent appointed folks seem like they've been chilling out. Uh, I know Justin Harper and Rip have been the most recent appointed, Kira, I believe, was really eager. Didn't we just appoint them like a month ago?
Yeah, there are people who are interested in meeting, just haven't met forums, even talked about what they're going to be doing as members. So has Kira showed up yet?
I sent the, the, the most recent appointed, the, the email is taken out of office. I didn't, I imagine they wouldn't have been able to be, because it was the meeting directly following after they were appointed. But I still haven't heard from him to have his help office.
So, so Kira has not taken, I don't know.
That's correct.
Okay. Um, yeah, I, I mean, I think part of it is like people's interest. So there's actually a lot like outlined in what the, yeah, the role and responsibility of this Human Relations Commission is. Like we just need to find people who are committed to going and not schedule a meeting until, that, that we're not wasting this time.
One of the things, it's not just with the H R C, I know that we are minus members on almost all commissions. And, um, I know when Mr. Robinson contacted me about becoming a member of this, he was very, very excited about it. And I really anticipated that he was going to, you know, be there. And that's been the same with others that were appointed to commissions that in the beginning, they were very excited and were eager to become members on the commission. So I think that we do maybe need to have, rather than just having people apply and one person or so, but that we have maybe begin, start thinking about establishing a time when we meet with prospective commissioners and go over the responsibilities of being a commissioner, that it's not just, okay, I'm now a commissioner and who leads or I don't overmeet. But I think that maybe we need to look at trying to develop a plan where we actually do some, uh, some training in the very beginning for a person that's going to be on a commission. Uh, Mr. Jones Chance, is your hand up?
Um, yeah, I was just browsing the website again. I think if you don't go any deeper and you don't look at the welcome packet, it's, it's a little vague as to, as to what it does and then even the fact that it's, it's not extremely specific. I think a lot of the other boards and commissions have, you know, you can sort of determine what they do based on their name, right? Yeah, I mean, I guess this may be along the conversation. It's not really germane to the, uh, the motion here, but I, I think it's one we're having maybe about all of our commissions, but definitely about this one, especially if it's causing issues for staff and it seems to be a recurring theme.
Mr. Will.
I think the good is to recruit people in, in a more meaningful way. You know, liaison for a couple of different commissions and every person that I nominated, I had one conversation with more than one per, per person that and I took it very seriously and gave them a realistic expectation of what they could be seeing during the meetings and the amount of work and the amount of homework they would take to do the same in the time in the, uh, and I think, uh, you know, the function of this, this commission is, is important. And I think we just, you know, we need to get critical mass here to get this going again. And this has been kind of a slow steady decline, um, you know, since right after I got on council. With this particular, I went to, you know, a few of those meetings, not a lot of it's down council. Things were moving on, but it was, it was a couple of people doing all the work and a lot of people sitting there. And, and, you know, we got some commentary from those folks, but, um, you know, I think it's requires a little bit of truth, but our practice get people in and to give a realistic expectations. I will send it to you, John.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? This, this Helengel?
I have one comment, having been a part of many of the advisory bodies. The city is, is small and the, the staff limitations for these bodies are, are great. It might make sense for council to think of what, what missions do similar advisory bodies have and converge those mi- missions into one body. It takes a lot less recruitment and you get people that are more energized. And say if you take police advisory, merge with H R C that has similar missions. You have the arts commission, art is a recreation, merge that with arts and rec, you can do things to make it more efficient, takes stress off of staff, but still achieve the goal of the bodies.
Thanks. Thank you. Sounds like wisdom to me. Any other questions, comments? Being now, would you call the role?
Mayor Richardson?
Yeah.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Will Coxon?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Motion carries a five yes, two yes.
Thank you. Resolution twenty twenty-two dash two, two, four. Awarding the twenty twenty-two Metro Ranks Program contract.
Resolution number twenty twenty-two dash two, two, four, resolved by the Council of the City of Zalani. Whereas funding has been programmed for the retrofitting of existing sidewalk grounds in the city of Zalani. And whereas the city of Zalani has solicited sealed bids for the project. And whereas Great Lakes Contracting Solutions LLC is the lowest qualified bidder and is being recommended by the city's engineering consultant for this project. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Zalani award the two thousand twenty-two Metro Ranks contract to Great Lakes Contracting Solutions LLC for the bid amount of sixty-one thousand two hundred and sixty-eight dollars seventy-five cents. And that the mayor and city clerk are authorized to sign this contract subject to review by the city attorney. And any change orders are subject to review and approval by the city manager to facilitate to the completion of this work. I assume.
Order. It's been moved and supported and we have Ms. West was here to talk to.
I'm just here for questions, it's all in there.
Any questions or comments for Ms. West? I don't see any, thank you very much. Uh, any, that means that there's no questions or comments, period, and we can call the role? Mr. Helengel, would you please call the role?
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Will Coxon?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Motion carries a five yes, two yes.
Thank you. Liaison report, police advisory permission.
Our joint meeting is, uh, later this month.
I do have a, a question about that, that, that was one of the dates that was suggested by the chair of that committee. They didn't meet quorum last time, so they didn't have a chance to talk about that. Also, it falls on the same night as the bicentennial committee. So if council wants to maintain that date, we can definitely meet quorum with it. Or if council prefer to try to find another date. Fly back to collect a. Why back to collect a date that everyone from this body could attend with?
Mr. Michael, how many times would we change the date on this meeting?
It was just the one time the there was an issue with scheduling at July dates. And then the September date was a was a suggest alternative, also was the October date of YPAC. But we'll we'll definitely move forward with however council wants us to go.
Remind you of the date again?
Twenty-second of September.
Twenty-second?
Right, so it's a week from this Thursday.
There are a couple of councilmembers that are on bicentennial.
Correct.
Right, and so the all the dates were suggested because that's the date that the YPAC meets on. I don't know how in depth that conversation needs to be. I'm not entirely sure what would be on the agenda, but perhaps maybe it makes sense just to have a work session prior to the meeting for an hour or so.
Yeah.
There's only five members on that meeting currently, so we could definitely fit that in this room.
I would recommend, so I'm begging you possibly talk with the chair of the white hat and see if there she can offer some other date.
I I will talk to the chair tomorrow and they put that on the next agenda to bring some dates to council.
Thank you. Hey, Mayor Proton, did you have any other? Anything else for the white hat?
No, there was no part of the class.
Okay. I think human relations commission, we just broke of that.
A report? I do have a question, so there's no, yeah, no report, but. Eric Helanga, so are we now just not scheduling the meeting until we find out who's gonna be there?
So we created a yearly schedule for that, they've never been able to approve it. So we've just been having that meet come in. If it makes sense, we can hold off on scheduling another meeting until those five numbers that have been seated. And then I can let the commission know whether that have that come in back in form again and then further this engage from that.
And so do do we need anything from council to do something like that? Because I think that would be the best.
Thank you.
Arts commission. Yeah, so um arts commission met last week. I think that there's some confusion for them currently. And I think maybe there might be confusion or I I think council too. For the arts commission was formed for recommendations and regarding public art throughout the city and public spaces. They're currently working on like an application process for people if they come to the city with an idea for public art, like mushroom display that was put in process park. But yeah, so that's something that they're working on currently. I did go through a little bit with them, like what the ordinance actually says, so they understand the scope of the arts commission. With that, will help, you know, guide them. I do one thing that I took away from that meeting that I just want to make sure everybody in council knows. If somebody comes to one of us because they have an idea for public art, the only reason why they would need to engage with the city if it's if it's on city property. I think there was confusion around that with a local artist. So we just want to be clear that it's for public art within the city's purview on public property that we own.
So I have, thank you. Parks and Recreation Commission and Mr. Sweet is not with us this evening.
He's actually on virtually, if you, I don't know if he's on.
I'm sorry, he's on virtually.
Hello. Updates from our last meeting.
All right.
Fall River Day, hope you're feeling better.
Thank you, yeah, Fall River Day, and you mentioned I sent an email to everyone about, that's coming up on the twenty-fifth. Hope you'll stop by, check it out, tell your neighbors.
Thank you. Sustainability Commission.
As I said, there was not a meeting because it was not formed yesterday. But that is not a potential for that. The chair and a couple of people were were not able. I don't have any reports.
Thank you. Historic District Commission. That's Ms. Simmons, I believe, Planning Commission, Mr. Jones.
Oh, it hasn't been a meeting since our last meeting. And then we do have a joint meeting with them coming up, is that the twenty-first?
That is October eighteenth, that the.
So far, it's a good thing we extended that.
I thought, yes. It was, it was.
You you got changed, but the date on this meeting was the same.
Do you need the space for the two larger bodies in order to record it properly? So that's why we moved it to the eighteen. You can't all meet in here.
Sorry.
It's still, I'm sure they're in there. Yeah, so the next meeting is next week on the twenty-first.
Okay, thank you, anything from the zoning board?
There should be a meeting on Thursday.
Thank you. There's no update from Sim卡, the next meeting is the twenty-ninth of this month. The Washington area that's. Councilwoman Simmons, Urban County. Mr. Jacobs, do you have anything for us or?
Uh, I was at the Urban County meeting, no significant updates for that. Pretty usual business, we looked over the annual report.
Okay, thank you. White, the DDA, you have anything?
Yeah, so the DDA, we've had a couple of busy months. The solar grant program downtown is going very well, we've given away fifty thousand dollars for five new solar installations. We've got a new program called Explore IFC, which is aimed at EMU students and faculty. We're giving away over twelve hundred tokens worth ten dollars apiece. And those are being used. Those are being used through the month of September, and it's going really well. But we have a meeting next month or next week to approve a couple more projects, dog waste stations and the YDL candy giveaway for the Halloween event.
Thank you. Friends of Rutherford School.
There was a successful season, they closed out on Labor Day weekend. There is going to be a major fundraising. A couple of weeks before the end of the season, the vacuum that was used to clean the bottom of the pool broke and the cost on that is six to ten thousand dollars. And so there wasn't, towards the end of the season, it was pretty pretty weird, let's just say. But they made it through the season and there will be an effort to resurface the bottom of the pool and get a new vacuum system, so.
Okay, thank you. Bicentennial Committee.
Yeah, we have our first fundraisers coming up next Friday at the break house at seven P M. We are planning, we're working a lot with the DDA. I'm planning our first kickoff event for New Year's Eve. That's really all I have.
Hey, thank you. Our council proposed business, Mayor Proton.
I have, I I shared this with Christopher already, but the lights were out in the the Washington Park lot over here. I think they might still be out and it's very dark over there. About the lights, it's like deeper parking.
It's it's been reported to us, you know, that's off your.
Oh, so on the other side, but on the Washington side, this is the whole thing? All I knew was that that side of her, like it was so dark.
We we reported it to E T.
Okay.
I'm not sure the time.
Oh, awesome, okay. Thank you so much, I did park over that time as well, so we'll see. Um. That's all.
Thank you. Ms. Yeah, two things. I just want to thank city manager McMullin and Mr. Barr for helping me deal with a very difficult issue in my ward with vicious dogs that have brutally attacked different animals. And I'm actually concerned that a human being is going to be injured. So we are currently working through that and I reached out to the prosecutor's office because it looks like we don't have, as I understand it, Mr. Barr, we don't have the ability, we don't have like real animal control abilities in the city anymore. Am I correct in that?
Yes, that is correct.
Yes, so the prosecutor's office has it's flagged on their radar as soon as they get a report from us. So, uh, next thing, I'm lagging it for everybody because I'm hoping to bring it up sometime in the next few council meetings. The city of Xolani's poverty exemption is actually really low. Our poverty exemption for property taxes is about half of what Superior Township and IFC Township does. So currently, you can't make more than twelve thousand eight hundred dollars a year qualified for the poverty exemption, which means a lot of people, probably mostly seniors on fixed incomes, are being left out of being able to qualify for that. So I have some constituents who brought the issue to my attention and I'm hoping to have them give us a little presentation on the significance of that and who would be impacted if they increase it to meet the same threshold as our our neighbors. Yeah, so look forward to, that'll be, hopefully we'll get somebody to bring that forward with me.
Thank you. Mr. Walker.
Don't have an usual business, but something came up, there was a demonstration on EMU's campus today. And somebody from outside the city had called me and had also called any center involved about this. And the take home from this is that, you know, educating people on what the city can and cannot do is very important. The fact that this was something that was happening on EMU's campus meant that the city didn't permit any of it and that person needed to know that. We both gave the same messages to that. And it it was a First Amendment question anyway. And it's just a matter of tempering expectations for what the city council can do. And the person called and asked me what I could do about it and I said, you know, I'll talk to to E T and see what it was. But condition them to to know that this is gonna happen. And, you know, if it's a freedom of speech thing, then you can show up and you can wish your opinion. But there's there's not a lot we can do because it's on that property. And even if it was on city content, public property, there wouldn't be a whole lot we can do about it. But just making that, you know, putting that out there, and I've had this kind of question from from people before about, you know, what the city can do about these things. And, you know, limiting people's rights for streets is not something.
What was the demonstration on EMU's campus?
Yes. So, because I want to put that out there, that, you know, a lot of people are very unclear as to what the city council could do. And it's already we had to do that.
Sure, I hear you call up that, but I've had calls from the city that the city just can't handle. Thank you for that, Mr. Jones Chance.
Um, yeah, so spent a nice afternoon at the annual withdrawal picnic. And it's very nice to see the residents out there. And also looking forward to the Heritage Park Neighborhood Association's block party on October first. And I would also like to thank Mr. Abrams for all his work here at the city and for the residents of my ward, thank you. I didn't remember that.
So when is your last day again?
Friday.
This coming Friday? Okay.
It's gonna become a belvillian.
I thought we had you for another two weeks, wow. Okay, communications from the mayor. Well, a couple of things. One, on Saturday, on Saturday is Love is the Answer, the International Celebration of Love is the Answer Day. And this year in the city, the celebration will be at nine o'clock on Saturday morning. There will be a showing of the film and discussion at Brown Shackle Church, followed by lunch. And after lunch at one o'clock, there will be a painting of a mural and on the fence there at Congress Street. It's finesse, Air Salon, they have granted us the permission to use that long fence they have for a Love is the Answer mural. If anyone would like to stop by and paint a flower or two or whatever for that, feel please feel free to do so. The youth from Mentor to Youth will be painting that fence. And like I said, if you know anyone or if anyone wants to stop by, everyone is welcome to make a tape stroke on that fence. The other project for the afternoon is at one o'clock with, there will be the planting of a love garden at the garden spot there at Terry School, right there, out inside, outside, the inside, outside, the the parking lot at the corner of area and Hawkins. And the group in charge of planting the garden is Educate Youth, they have taken that on. So they they will be part of planting there. Anyone wanting to be a part of that can feel free to stop by there. And again, plant a rose or plant a vegetable or put some seeds in the ground. I too want to say, Mr. Akers, thank you so much for your fantastic work you've done here with the city, your dedication. I appreciate that. There were many times that whether it was the during the week or on the weekend, I could call you and say, hey, there is a serious problem. There is an issue. I tried not to call for anything that was frivolous, but and you always manage to take care of it. I really appreciate that. We wish you all the best as you just go down the road to work. We we wish we were able to, certainly able to match what they're offering you or offer you something that you would be, just we just have to stay here, but I know that that's not happening. So thank you very much for all that you have given to the city. And anytime you need us, just give us a call. Thank you, appreciate it. Okay, any comments from the city manager? Thank well. I see your hand is up.
No, that's my mouse.
Oh, that comes back closer, okay. Ms. McMullin, are you there? Things not, any communications? Okay. It was discussed already that the council and planning commission meeting October eighteenth. And we're going to reschedule the police advisory commission. And our Xolani Community Schools Board joint meeting is set for September the twenty-sixth. If you have any suggestions for that agenda, please get them to me. And I will. And I will certainly talk with the clerk about getting them on the agenda. We are now open for public comment, anyone would like to, uh, comment? Is there anyone online with comment, Mr. No One? Okay, um, well, remarks from the mayor are that I, once again, want to say thank you to Mr. Akers and the city council for moving the meeting along, helping to move the meeting along tonight. And, uh, Mr. Wilcox, you have the honor. But before that, I would like to say that, I would like to encourage everyone to, on Saturday, whether you're able to participate in the official Love is the Answer Day, reach out to a neighbor or someone that you know that is an elderly person or somebody, just reach out and show some love. Because love truly is the answer, it's gonna get us through the place where we are right now in our nation and in our city. So, thank you. Mr. Wilcox?
Resolution number 2022 dash two two five, resolved by the council of the city of Ipsilanti. City council meeting be adjourned on call by mayor or three members of council, nice move.
And the meeting is adjourned, thank you.